I'm in some Zoom meeting. I sure hope this is the California Broadband Council.
You're in the right place, Sunny. Good to see you again. I'm Catherine.
Hi Catherine. There's Mr. Baloo. I just sent you an email Jeff.
Yep, I just saw it dropped in. Morning Sunny.
Good morning. I like your background.
Oh, it's very pretty.
Wish we were there instead of here background, right?
Yes, yes. So that actually, that looks like a lake in the Sierras, but which one?
It's called Island Lake up by Bowman Lake. Near Lake Spalding.
Okay, okay. Excellent, excellent. The granite sort of gives it away, doesn't it?
Right?
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, I just wanted, I didn't want to, I didn't want you to hear from anybody else that we had made that progress and actually deliveries happened. As I was trying to figure out when they were going to happen, suddenly school districts are telling us, oh, it actually, you know, we've gotten them. So anyway, just so you know.
Yeah, that's awesome. Morning Stephanie.
Hi, great to see everyone.
Thanks for the reminder. I didn't know what I was supposed to do Stephanie. I guess I'm in need of a lot of instruction and tutorials here.
Hi Arturo, hi. I see Lori's on.
Yep, sorry. Hi, I'm just trying to finish up one thing.
No worries, no worries.
Stephanie, we might have Secretary Ross jump on. If she signs on, I'll go ahead and jump off.
Perfect. Or you, you know, you'll just stay on, right? But maybe in the background, I mean, or is she gonna, if she jumps on, she'll be on for the whole meeting?
Yeah, yeah. If she, if she's able to make it, she can stay the whole time.
Fantastic.
I will be watching though.
Hi Catherine, hi Jules, hi guys.
How are you?
Good. Okay, and forgive me, we have YMS. Who's that? Do we know? Hi Elizabeth. Oh, she's connecting. Does anyone know who, who am I missing on the initials? We'll have to take a roll call, or maybe my mind is just escaping me. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, I'm gonna turn it on to a real background, but just in case anyone is, if this looks familiar to anyone, that is Leslie Knope's office.
I was gonna say, this is so official. I mean, we're like
You can get that background if you want, but I'll go to an official State Library background now.
I was thinking last night, we need to get a background now, I think. We need to have a little bit more promotion. Should it be broadband council, should be broadband for all? I think we need to establish something here.
Sunny, I like that you don't need a fake background because your real office background is really cool.
I think everything on my walls must be fake based on what I've done in my life, so. But it is a testimony to how desperate governors get when they appoint me.
You're the best person at not taking a compliment, Sunny.
Well, and you know how I've earned this melody.
Good morning Ann, good morning Martha.
Oh my gosh!
Long time no see. Hi Sunny.
Hi Adalina, it is great to see you.
Yeah, Adalina.
Morning.
I'll be, I'll be off in a minute. I won't be showing my face so all of you guys can be the target of attention and you guys have done such an amazing job. So, so, so proud of everybody. This is just such exciting times on something so definitely needed.
It is. Adalina, I want to say we had, we got a great photo of you and Rob together at the public forum, Stephanie, on the 30th or 31st, that Friday that we, back in January, do you remember?
Oh.
The listening session?
Pardon?
The listening session?
The listening session.
On January 31st?
Yes, January 31st. And it just seemed perfect because I have these fond memories of how Rob and then Adalina and Rob and Adalina together were tasked with staffing the broadband council. When, and now, you know, you, you and that with Amy and it's really evolved because when Senator Padilla came up with the idea, and it was definitely Alex who did. He and Jackie wrote the legislation. They wrote it so it could get through the legislature, which said, no appropriation, but whoever is chairing it will have to staff it.
Yes, yes, yes. I remember those days Sunny. You don't me a cup of coffee with a little something in it, no.
And I just, I just thought, oh, this photograph of the two of you was so perfect in capturing everything that was behind it, that went into getting us to this point and the governor signing the executive order, you know, is like, okay, there is this whole evolution that went on for years to get to that point.
I'm gonna bother myself because I have my dogs, but I'm looking forward to listening in and helping wherever I can. I'll be later.
I just locked my door so my three-year-old wouldn't run in.
That's okay. Shut the double doors to the office and when the, when the second door, since there's a hallway between, the second door shut, that's like means this is serious. That means, do not come in, don't let the dog in, right? Nothing. That means like this is serious, meaning that's the sign for everyone, so I understand.
Justin, your hair is really long.
I know. I missed, I missed the window when I could get my haircut and I fundamentally do not trust my wife to cut my hair. And so this is the longest my hair has ever been.
I can't see a picture.
It just looks swag. And that means you don't want to get your haircut in a parking lot. That's okay. Like I just saw the other day.
So I'm actually open to the parking lot idea. I just haven't figured out who that person is. How was drop-off Stephanie?
Drop-off was interesting. So, I mean, it was, you know, kind of all about business, but it's exciting. It's a lot of mixed emotions. So for, for everyone as around the prep time, I brought my son to college at Kansas University. Was it this week? I don't even know what day it was, but I, and I'm actually technically on vacation, but of course you all know how passionate I am. So I really wanted to be here for this meeting and to be able to kick this off because we've put so much blood, sweat and tears in it. But college drop-off was great, but there's, you know, wearing the mask, being safe, very organized. So it was, it was good. Thank you. Good morning. So we have lots of people joining in about four minutes till we get started.
I'm gonna ask the non-council member, gonna turn off their camera so that we can have the council members' camera more readily available to folks. And then as people speak, then they can turn on their camera. All right, good morning everyone. It's one minute, one minute after 10 o'clock. I think we're go ahead and get things started. As a very first order of business, if I could have the council member to make sure that your screen is your camera, sorry, is on, so we can make sure that you are prominent at the front. And then any of the member audience or support staff, I'll leave it to your discretion, to have your camera on or not, but we want to make sure we can see all of the council member first. I'd like to call this special session of the California Broadband Council to order and first to have a roll call to make sure we have quorum to get this meeting going. If I can turn that over to Joel to begin with the roll call please.
Sure. Good morning, Ms. Tong.
Here.
Ms. Guzmanisavas.
Here.
Mr. Mallon. Mr. Below.
FLO here for CDE for Jerry Winkler.
Mr. Jamison.
Present.
Ms. Pepper.
Here.
Ms. McPeak.
Here.
Mr. Barajas.
Here.
Ms. Navel Bonia.
Here.
Ms. Snyder.
In.
Ms. Smith is unavailable and Dr. Williams. We do have a quorum.
Great. Thank you for that Joel. And welcome to our special session and we have quite agenda item to cover. And if I could have the staff to go ahead and show the agenda for today for a minute as I'm going through them. First of all, we are very, very happy to acknowledge the fact that there is an executive order on broadband. And thank you so much for those of you who participated in this effort. We know that it, it's a quite a lift in term of providing all of the great feedback and, but at the same time, it's a long time and coming and we're really excited about it. Later on in the agenda, I affected as the staff to go ahead and share the agenda as we talk. We will have Stephanie Tom, the Deputy Director of Broadband and Digital Literacy, to provide a brief summary of, of the executive order. And then from there, we could also talk about, you know, the effort that would be involved in executing that for those of you that has a department that you represented and, and that are mentioned in the executive order. But the majority of the meeting today is gonna be focusing on the specific action that was asked by the executive order to have the California Broadband Council to develop a broadband action plan by end of the calendar year. And we do have, we do recognize this is a lot of work ahead and and because of the Bagley King, the development of such broadband action plan needs to be done in the public forum. So that we will be hosting monthly working sessions such as this and on the date to be determined, we probably will be able to share those day at the end of it to work through this. And in order to move in an expeditious way, but still in a very diligent manner and make sure that we gather inclusive feedback from our community. In this case, community meaning, you know, our locals, our, our community representatives and many of the folks that are not part of the broadband council but has been a constant advocate of the broadband for all. We wanted to make sure that through a public commenting process, that all of their feedbacks are obtained. So that therefore in today's session, we have actually have a individual, I want to make sure I have a chance to introduce him to help us facilitate the planning of developing such action plan. And it would be today's goal that with this meeting that we get to a consensus on how that development can take place. So thank you for the agenda being brought forward. I just want to make sure that, coming back a little bit, that the broadband for all action plan does reflect the four component, data, mapping, funding, deployment and adoption. So we will spend majority of our time on this particular agenda item today. So go ahead and thank you for that. You can close out the sharing of the agenda, go back to the screen. And with that, I'd like to introduce, I just mentioned his name early, but then he'll come back and talk about his approach. Our facilitator of the broadband development sorry, let me scroll up. Justin Cohen Shapiro, he is the Chief Strategist from Department of Technology and Justin, you wanna do a quick intro?
Sure, thank you Amy. Well, it's nice to see a lot of familiar faces and some not familiar faces and excited to talk a little bit more in a little bit. I recently joined CDT a couple of weeks ago from the governor's office and am excited to be working with Amy and this team to be able to make headway on, you know, what's one of the biggest issues that COVID has put into such stark relief over the past several months. And so this is an area that I know that this group has a lot of passion around and dedication and I think we've got a real opportunity here to be able to put points on the board over the coming weeks and months on this topic area. I should say, by way of preface before we, before I go too far as well, I'm also a recovering management consultant. I spent the better part of a decade at McKinsey &amp; Company and so for those of you who've had the, the pleasure of that experience, you'll, you'll recognize some familiar ways of thinking as we, as we walk through.
Great, thank you Justin. All right, and I know that we, you know, can't wait to talk about the EO, so how we'd like to start this meeting is to have Stephanie Tom to provide a brief overview of the executive order. And then I'd like to open up to each of the council member. If you'd like to chime in with some of your thoughts, we're gonna limit to no more than two minutes for council members, so we can quickly get through that and then spend majority of our time on the action plan development approach. So with that, Stephanie, you're up.
Hey, thank you, thank you Amy and welcome again to Justin. And good morning to everyone on this special session for the California Broadband Council. Of course, I cannot help but continue to have this kind of TV smile on my face because we've had many meetings and I've had such great collaboration with many of you around this broadband executive order, which was signed and announced by the governor on Friday, August 14th. So I do want to echo once again, as Amy says, thank you, thank you so much to your collaboration. It's been a lot of hard work and dedication to get to this point. And of course, now the real work begins, which is why we're having this special session. So I did want to take just a couple minutes to talk about what the executive order looks like now, given the work that we've put into it. Of course, the executive order focuses on two key areas, two key things that we need to deliver on. The first, of course, which we are gonna focus on is the action plan. The broadband action plan, which is the responsibility of the California Broadband Council to deliver by the end of this calendar year. The second key area, of course, are the orders within this executive order, which came down to about 15. And of course, as you can see, the executive order was orchestrated into the four key categories, about 15 orders, as Amy mentioned, around mapping and data, around funding and around deployment and adoption. So it's these four categories that we would like to mimic the action plan if we feel that's the right direction to move into. And it's the action plan that I did want to focus a little bit about how we would go about creating this over the next four months. I know some of you have reached out to me saying, wow, four months seems like a very quick time, but if you think about honestly, all the work that we've done in other areas, it's actually quite a bit of time. So I'm confident that we can execute this together. We will, of course, be abiding by Bagley King, so we do want to make sure and we have taken into account, of course, as Amy said, we will have monthly meetings to make sure that we have the right cadence, so we will be able to gather together more frequently to make sure that we're having the right reviews and having the right inclusive comments and feedback from the community as we create this plan. We also have, will make sure that we have grouped the various council members and others as necessary to make sure that we have the right drafting and creation and review. And of course, we will be leveraging tools for efficiency such as Microsoft Teams. That's only to centralize documents, but of course, we will be sharing this publicly to make sure that everybody has been think and aware of the various drafts as we come together on the monthly telephone broadband council meetings. So we have thought through over the last week or two, since the executive order was signed, what the process will look like to make sure that we're clear on our marching steps, how we will move forward to execute the action plan. A couple of other things that I wanted to note before I turn it back over to comments regarding the executive order is that we do want to keep in mind regarding the action plan, of course, as you can note in order number two of the executive order, specifically it states that the broadband council will create a new action plan. And that's acknowledging that, of course, the state has already had an existing plan, but we need a new one since it's been over a decade. We want to make sure, of course, that the action plan is feasible. But we also want to make sure it's visionary, that it's forward-thinking and really places California, it, of course, at the forefront of broadband because we are catching up a little bit. So we're looking to create something new. We want to make sure that we're considering all the key elements and all the critical feedback from the necessary parties. And I think together, this is something that will truly put a true stake in the ground for California into 2021. And I think in closing, I would just say, I can't help but reflect, it continues to stay in my mind at our listening session, as Sunny and I were talking even earlier on January 31st of this year, Amy closed that meeting by saying 2020 will be a year of delivery and let me tell you, regardless of everything that's gone on in 2020, this is a year of delivery. And today marks the day we will continue forward for broadband. So thank you.
I'd like to ask, thank you for that Stephanie. I'd like to ask the broadband council member, join me in the big round of applause to Stephanie and her leadership and you know, in bringing together this, you know, executive order and yes, thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, I know with, with this excitement and passion, you can see, and I know there are many, many have contributed along the way, and Adalina is also joining from a former deputy director, now the deputy director of special projects with CDT. We're very, very blessed to have, you know, all of these champions of broadband continue to work with us. I'd like to open it up to a broadband council member, if you have any initial thoughts and just, you know, share this excitement before we can talk about what we need to do. I'm gonna, just gonna call folks and in my screen order, so it may be different. And let's start with maybe Ann.
Great, thanks so much Amy. Well, we are really excited and congratulations to the team. We know this was such a huge undertaking and we, the library, we're really excited to be able to be a small part of that and are really excited to work in partnership to help bring the action items in the EO to fruition. We, a couple of things that we just wanted to highlight where we thought we could be helpful. We know the PUC is leading on the data and aggregation efforts with the State Transportation Agency. We certainly have data from library locations where we have been unable to connect them to what they want to get to because either they haven't been able to get bids or because the bids have been too expensive in partnership with our partner Sinek. And so we'd love to be able to bring that into the, into the discussion around anchor institutions. The, we've also, you know, there's a lot of work going on and we're thinking a lot about the state and federal funding. As many of you know, we have now the As many of you know, we have now the grants.ca.gov, which is the state grants portal. And we hope that that's going to allow us to do some better analysis of the kinds of grants that are available. And maybe start thinking more creatively about ways that existing grants might be able to be used to support broadband. And we'd be happy to help with any data analysis efforts over that. We were specifically called out in the section on outreach in terms of the affordable broadband opportunities. And we've been, we've already reached out to library directors around the state around that and are talking with them about how to, how we might be able to support them in that work. Some of them are already doing that. And we'd love to talk more and talk with other community organizations that are going to be doing that kind of outreach. And then lastly, libraries around the state, you know, about 50% of Americans and similarly in California visit a library every year. Today, most people are visiting virtually still. But libraries do a lot of work with seniors in our communities. And so, we'd love to work with CDT and the Department of Aging around some of this work with digital equity for seniors. There's a lot of work going on in libraries around that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. All right. I'm going to quickly move to the next council member. You can just, you know, brief comment so that we can get into the broadband council action plan. How about we go to Arturo?
Thanks, Amy. Yeah, well, we at TDFA are really excited. I think we've, you know, been excited to join as one of the newest members. We look forward to continuing integrating a lot of the work that we do around climate smart agriculture and really focusing on, on, you know, identifying those projects around specialized agriculture and really the food system as well. I think there's one thing that COVID has really put a line on is our food system from the farm to the grocery store. As well as continuing our work that we're doing with the fairgrounds throughout the state and the work that they do in emergency response, knowing that without broadband, our emergency response really is at fault and could always be improved with improved broadband connectivity in the rural areas. So, with that, just really excited. I'm excited to be helpful to put the EO together and ready to get to work.
All right. Thank you, Arturo. I realize how my screen is laid out. Apparently, it's by alphabetical order of people's first names. So, I guess that's why both of you start with the A or showing up first. I think that goes to maybe either Brent or Butch will be next.
Sorry, just unmuted. Thank you, council members. Brent Jameson with Department of General Services. Again, just echoing a lot of the other comments that have already been made. There's a lot of ideas that we've talked about in concept, you know, in furtherance of, you know, broadband deployment for several months, if not years now. And it is extraordinarily gratifying on behalf of myself, Director Kim, Department of General Services, to see them memorialized in an executive order and really get that phenomenal leadership from the administration to help us kind of push forward a lot of these ideas that we've wanted to tackle for several months. So, very excited to see where this goes. And happy to, looking forward to the conversation that's going to ensue as we really kind of pick apart how we're going to push this forward and really get a solid action plan in the next four months.
Great. Thank you, Brent. I think I see Christina next.
Thanks. I'll just be brief. Really excited to get this started. I've heard from a lot of tribes that they're really happy with being engaged on the front end because there are a lot of kind of technical and legal and all sorts of issues with implementation on tribal lands. So, they're excited to kind of dig in. And looking forward to implementation. Right now in COVID, we're seeing that there's a lot of things that can't happen right now. And tribal communities gathering is a really important piece. And so, figuring out how to do that via social media and other platforms has been an interesting exercise in how native people connect. And we're seeing things like social media powwow. We're having a digital Native American Day this year and doing a lot of consultation via these kind of platforms. But again, you know, many of the knowledge bearers in tribal communities are elders, many are in rural areas. And so, this is just more important than ever to make sure that tribes continue to be engaged. You know, even when we're going through some of these challenges while they stay safe. So, really excited for this opportunity. I think it's, it's a long time coming. And I think that it'll be good to, good to dig in with tribal communities. So, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Christina. If I can have Jeff and then followed by Laurie. Jeff?
Thank you, Amy. Yeah, thanks for taking time. And we appreciate being a part of this with, from education's perspective, with 6.2 million kids trying to do distance learning right now. And connectivity, as you can imagine, our schools across the state are intimately aware of the immediate climate of broadband in California. Many are starting to encourage us to look at it as a, almost like it is the electricity. You know, broadband is as important as electricity. This has become, as you imagine, a high priority of the superintendent because it's equity issue, both in the urban areas where there's affordable offers that are lacking or urban area or rural areas where there is no offers at all. There's infrastructure. Looking forward to coming at this from both the immediate need right now for kids and then also a long-term sustainable solution for all the citizens of California because it's not just our K-12 under 18 kids that are unconnected across the state. It is, somebody said earlier, broadband council, I mean, eight, age 888 is what we're looking at for our citizens. So, happy to be a part in whatever we can do to help.
Thank you, Jeff, for that. Laurie, and then we follow by, I mean, do my alphabet right. I think Martha is next. And then Patrick after that.
Thanks, Amy. And thanks to you and the entire CDT team. I think this is just so exciting that we're able to come together and to do an updated state action plan at CalSta and also on behalf of, of course, our department, Caltrans. And Elizabeth is here to participate as well from Caltrans. I think we're super excited because we, we've kind of been going through over the past probably six months, really looking at what is our part in helping to solve this, this just significant problem. And I think as Justin said, the coronavirus, it didn't kind of expose, you know, the, what's something that we didn't know, but it has certainly put the entire problem in focus and has increased the urgency to figure out how to solve the problem. So, we are very motivated and excited to get started. So, thanks to everyone and just really looking forward to this process.
Thank you, Laurie. Martha, followed by Patrick?
Thank you. And thank you, Amy, again, for all of your leadership on the executive order. And of course, tremendous work in particular that Stephanie had, has done and did for so long. Really, really appreciate all the work that you all did. And the amount of coordination is so tremendous. I also want to thank, take a moment to thank all the teachers as we head back to school. Many of us, it is just another moment of appreciation that we have these angels in our state that are guiding us through this process. So, the big shout out to all the teachers in our state for helping families through this crisis. Just to be really brief, I wanted to share that the federal funding, the ARDOF, as we've all called it, the Rural Opportunity Fund, that the auction will be taking place October 29th. And as I've mentioned before, we do have costs. We put together a website with a map with cost information about territories that are eligible for ARDOF to really help potential applicants figure out if it's, if it's an opportunity for them. So, that's a, again, a huge opportunity that we're really hoping to draw down some of that federal funding and hope to update you as that process moves along. As many of you know, we did some budget trailer language on that, just allowing the big, the infrastructure fund, the California Advanced Service Fund to try to optimize a federal funding. And we, Commissioner Sharoma, my fellow commissioner, who is the lead on the lifeline proceeding, will be soon releasing a proposal for a broadband subsidy under the lifeline program. And hopefully, that should be coming out this next month. Finally, we continue to work on partnership with the Department of Education. And I know all the work that they're doing again is so tremendous. I just want to note through the California Teleconnect Fund, I see Rob just sent me some of the latest stats here. We've been able to assist 375 districts, funded over 86,000 devices. And through the CSF Adoption Fund, we were able to fund 11,000 devices. So, we're currently working with them to see how we continue this funding on hotspots and devices through the end of the year. And anyway, look forward to the discussion and so much more to update on. But I think that's, that's a good summary for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martha. Can I have Patrick followed by Sunny? And then I see Secretary Ross, just to join. If Secretary Ross, if you'd like to help us close off, just, you know, a minute of thoughts on the EO before we go into the work session of broadband, that would be great. So, Patrick, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we're excited about, you know, moving this broadband initiative forward. I mean, from a public safety resiliency, you know, perspective, you know, we're very interested in improving the cellular coverage in and around the fairgrounds. We're very interested in improving the broadband and the fiber connection into the fairgrounds. And I think one of the next, or one of the steps that we need to include in this process is to really create a mesh network where we're not relying upon one single connection. Yesterday, as an example, we had a fiber cut along 395 on the east side of the Sierras and it took out cellular coverage basically from north of, north of, of, oh, I can't remember the name. But anyway, from the south end to almost up to, to the Mammoth area. And that was out for almost nine hours before they were able to get the fiber cut. And so, that, that entire section of the state was without broadband connectivity and without cellular connectivity. If we had, you know, dual paths into, into that connection, then there's, there's an alternate route to, to maintain the connection. So, we have some interesting times ahead of us to provide some, you know, broadband resiliency throughout the state of California. So, thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, Sunny?
Thank you, Chair Tong. And I want to just underscore all of the congratulations to you and Stephanie, the department for your leadership in securing the executive order, but also commend all the state agencies for your commitments. This is really remarkable and a great milestone for California. It's, it's almost like now being able to sing from a hymnal to hear all of the, the state agencies with your, with your identified actions that you're following. In the executive order, the California Emerging Technology Fund is identified. And I'm told actually that it was the California Department of Education who suggested that we be tasked with continuing to promote affordable offers. And I just want to underscore that in the last two weeks of school and people trying to learn online, as I think everyone has mentioned, and Jeff has talked about, I am actually alarmed at still where we need to fill in with two kinds of things that I want to flag so we can discuss them in the action plan. The first is that the affordable offers are totally inadequate in terms of speeds. They're totally inadequate in terms of how they're offered. We have provided feedback to the internet service providers. We have commanded, we have highlighted how good the ISPs have been in stepping up, and they've got to be a lot better. And so, we're giving no one a pass. It would not be a surprise to anyone on this call to know that we're continuing to press. And that is really, really an important agenda item. They actually need to advertise their available offers, not only, you know, increase the speeds, not kick people off as two companies require in order to have them sign up if they now, if they now qualify. The digital divide has become a digital cliff. We've got families falling off into deeper poverty, greater isolation, and they need to be able to sign up now. And they need to be able to advertise, know about these offers. So, that's, that's number one. I think the administration is doing a lot on that front. You probably are as well. I'm sure there are things going on. I don't know the Economic Recovery Task Force, the governor's office, but that's a high, high priority for us. Second, secondly, there are, there is infrastructure that exists in areas where there's still too low a bandwidth or too low a speed that is offered in these, in these offers. So, we've got to be able to do that. And then we know that there is inadequate infrastructure in unserved rural and truly poor, underserved urban. To do those upgrades, which we know the marketplace hasn't done before, requires money. And so, while it's been a unpretty process to watch, I am hopeful that there is convergence in the legislature with the governor's office that there will be additional funding so we can focus on what needs to be done, that we have been obviously involved in as well. And lastly, the opportunity that Commissioner Guzmanisevus just mentioned of lifeline being a place in which we can meld, if you will, the affordable offers and what the ISPs have already been doing with what is necessary to ensure an offer that everyone can afford because it is a universal necessity today. I think that requires or deserves attention in the, in the action plan as well. And so, I, I want to just say that that is a great vehicle for accomplishing much of what the governor has ordered us all to do.
Thank you, Sunny, for that. And Secretary Ross, would you like to share your comments to wrap up this portion of the agenda?
I know that Arturo did a good job of that, but I do want to add my thanks and praise to you and your team. And I think it's unfortunate that this has shown us how critical broadband is and what the digital, digital divide means to the state. Sorry, I'm just back from the dentist. I can't talk right. And, and the work of the Economic Recovery Task Force has really helped crystallize that. We just have to keep that momentum going. So, we're looking forward to working with everyone. Thanks.
Thank you, Secretary. All right. Well, thank you so much, the council member, for his thoughts. And let's, let's get to work. There is obviously the specific EO portion that each of the departments that you all represent that we have. And then CDT under the Office of Abra-Band Council, Abra-Band Council, under the Office of Abra-Band, I will be able to coordinating that. And but right now, specifically the broadband action plan, it's what this broadband council needs to work towards putting together. So, without further ado, let me go ahead and bring Justin back up and go ahead and facilitate the planning of it. Justin?
Thank you, Amy. And thank you all for those incredibly inspiring opening comments. So, before I share my screen and distract everyone with PowerPoint, wanted to offer a little bit of just sort of framing for what we're going to hope to accomplish in the next, call it 40, 50 minutes or so. Want to use this as an opportunity to provoke some discussion around the council members about what we're really hoping to accomplish with this action plan. Obviously, some elements of the action plan have already been defined in the context of the executive order, specific things that we must include. But there are a lot of, there's a lot of sort of white space that we can decide to fill in. And so, we're organizing the next, this conversation around sort of five specific questions that we've taken a stab at answering. And again, the intent behind the answers to these questions is not to say that those answers are correct, but is to be provocative into create a discussion across this team. And so, those five questions are, what's the problem we're trying to solve or the question we're trying to answer with this action plan? What are the criteria that we believe a successful plan should meet? What are, what's actually in scope here? What are some of the constraints that we face as we're building this action plan? And then how do we want to build it? And so, these are sort of the foundational questions in our mind that we want to make sure that we come out of this meeting today aligned around a perspective about how we want to take it forward so that in the context of Bagley Keane and doing this work together in the open, we have sufficient alignment to be able to get this work started. And so, the way that I'm hoping to do this, I'm going to share my screen in a second, but would love to you sort of go through each section of this. but would love to you sort of go through each section of this and do a little walkthrough and then open it up to questions and discussion. And I, I want to ask the council members a quick question before I, I go there, which is, does everyone know how to raise their hand on Zoom? So that I can use that to call on people? I see Anne nodding. I see Jeff nodding. I see Lori nodding. I see Amy nodding. Sunny, are you? I see a nod as well. Christina? Brent? Okay. So if you go to the, actually, maybe this is a different, you know, interesting, this is a different instance. So why don't we do this, Brent? Oh, perfect. You got it.
Just actually raise your hand if you need to.
Exactly. Patrick, are you, you good with that as well? And Martha? Arturo, I don't see you on the screen, but wanted to check in as well.
Secretary Ross is covering for CD.
Perfect. Secretary Ross, good to see you again. I, I can't hear you, but I see a smile.
Yeah, this happens to me all the time. I can clap, I can do a thumb, but I still haven't found the raised hand. So I will be the one to.
That, that's great. Okay. So I'm going to look for, for that, for questions after we go through. And now I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see my screen? I see nods. I'm going to put this into the slideshow. Okay, perfect. Okay. So already walked through this first slide. So the first question, the first element that we wanted to make sure that we're aligned around is what, what's the question? What's the basic thing that we're hoping this action plan is actually going to provide an answer to? And so the, the sort of the starting question we wanted to throw out there for discussion was the following, which is what tangible evidence-based actions will the state of California, in partnership with its key stakeholders, take in the next year to stay on track to achieve its broadband goals by 2025? And I want to call out explicitly a couple of things that are incorporated in this. One is, this is a indication that the action plan should be an annual thing. Second thing is it calls out reference to something that's not mentioned in the executive order, which is around actually having sort of stakes in the ground for a longer timeframe and making sure that we're aligned around what those mile markers are. And so again, wanted to be really simple with how we frame this to make sure that we're aligned on the question we're trying to answer as we do this work. So with that, I am trying to look at all of the council members. I don't see any raised hands at the moment. Anyone have any questions or adjustments that they would want to? Lori, thank you for raising your hand.
No problem. Trying to learn how to do this, you know, politely in a virtual world. I know when you, when you ran through all of the questions earlier, the last you talked about was the scoping question. And to me, that might be, it feels like that should be one of the first things that we answer. Because I know when we talk about this issue, there's kind of in my, in my mind, we have the more immediate need that we just have to fix or we have to figure out how to fix. And then there's kind of the long-term, how do we get permanent broadband access that, you know, high quality? And those questions to, as you know, throughout, throughout the state. But, you know, we talked a lot today. I heard a lot of comments about the immediate need. And so I guess my question is, is that something we're trying to solve through this plan? Or are we really focused on that kind of long-term, those long-term permanent solutions? And I feel like that affects the question, the answer to this question as well.
It's a great question. And it's something that I think, just to reframe that a little bit, it's basically to say, in the way that the executive order is actually written, it's very much focused on deployment in a sort of a longer term, more traditional sense. But the question you rightly raise is to what extent is the immediate connectivity issues surrounding COVID and equity elements that, that entails in scope for this work? And would love to get other perspectives from the council on that question. Anne, thank you for raising your hand.
Thanks, Justin. Just in terms of that, I would, I think it would be great if we are also focusing, you know, as much on the infrastructure piece and the affordability piece as also focusing on the device piece and the literacy piece. Because those other facets can't happen. We, we can't have the equity we're seeking without those other assets. And, you know, for, I, I would also just say, I think for a long time, we have moved, the infrastructure question has been front and center. And the adoption piece, the devices have almost always taken a backseat over the, the last number of years for many different reasons. But I think as Sunny so, so rightly pointed out in talking about the digital cliff, we know that, you know, and, and as CDE is giving out statistics on, we know the device piece is as critical now. And part of it is we haven't had as much data on that, right? And now we're finally getting more up-to-date data and seeing, you know, how bad it is. And, and too, for a while, we were talking about, you know, there was a lot of this, well, if you have a smartphone, that's okay, right? And lots of people said, no, you can't do the same thing, right? You can simply be a passive consumer on that. You can't create, you can't make, you can't do homework. And I think COVID has kind of demonstrated for everyone that yes, that is not an acceptable alternative. And so I think really building that in, so we have that comprehensive view of what equity means in terms of broadband is going to be really important. Otherwise, we just, we're just going to one piece.
Yeah. So thank you for that, Anne. So what I'm hearing with that is very much the, there's, you know, as we think about what California's broadband goals are, the way that you would define that would be more broadly than deployment, but actually get into these questions around devices and literacy and the broader equity questions, Anne. I saw two hands clapping earlier. I saw Sunny clapping and Martha clapping. I wasn't sure if either of those were intended to be a raised hand and so wanted to offer that as an opportunity. All right, Sunny, I saw yours first, so please.
I would always defer to Commissioner Guzmanisevis. I was trying to both clap and raise my hand. So I guess I'm, I'm, I'm back with Karen. I don't know what I'm doing, although I thought, so.
It's a brave new world here.
Okay, so let me defer to Martha.
Okay, sure. Thank you. And I, I, I don't know. I thought that was the clap. I thought the clap was the hand raised. So sorry, I don't know my emojis. The thing I was going to mention is in terms of phasing here, I think that was somewhat of Lori's question, if I understood it. And I would just add in addition to devices, something that is even more imminent now is disconnections and, and people being disconnected from the carriers. Just this week, our number one complaint in our consumer affairs folks that deal with customers directly is being not, not having adequate communication service beyond any other provider, any other sector. It is complaints around outages, complaints around disconnections. And, you know, the SEC pledge goes so far, but we need carriers. And this is obviously part of the action plan, but we need an immediate plan for carriers to not disconnect people. It is an essential necessity right now. We need to have a dialogue about how to get that in place as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Sunny, did you want to?
I, I want to, yes. And I think I am, you can hear me, right, Justin?
Loud and clear.
Okay, I can't, I can't see if I'm either talking or, or on the screen. But I do want to agree with underscore what both Anne and Martha have just said. And in answer to your question, to say that the, it's inextricably interrelated, deployment and adoption. And since the PUC in 2005 came up with this great idea to establish the California Emerging Technology Fund, they came up with that name. I wasn't even paying attention while they were doing the proceeding. That we have always said broadband, deployment, broadband, adoption are all part of digital equity. And that goal of equity, digital equity means everybody is able to be online and to participate with the tools, and it's just a tool, but a very empowering and powerful tool, participate digitally in governance, in democracy, in the economy, in education, in healthcare, et cetera. That cannot happen without having both pieces in, in focus. And there is a relationship to the viability, the economics of deploying based on take rates. If we make the commitment that we will drive to the most remote lands, which in California are rural, unserved and all the tribal lands, and to the poorest neighborhoods, then we will take care of everybody else. The marketplace actually does operate in response to middle, moderate, and higher income. It does not operate for rural, remote tribal lands and to the really high, high need, poor communities. So I want to, I want to suggest that that's true. The partnerships that are essential with the private sector, the internet service providers, others are essential, but they are still, we are somehow not getting everybody to the table to be a part of this, of this solution.
Thank you, Sunny. I think it was Jeff. I believe I saw a hand raised earlier.
Thanks, Justin. Because of who I am and because of who I feel like most of these council members are, we care so deeply about this topic. I guess the part that relates back to this question is, you know, we, we, we do go to digital equity. We, we are concerned about training and support and devices. I want to clarify though, are we talking about digital equity, a digital equity action plan or just the broadband piece of this? Because they are interrelated, as it's been mentioned, but they are a different, different things. And there's different parts of money, you know, it's like people talk about broadband and, and investment when we get to that part. And, you know, you, you can't use 30-year bonds to buy a device that's going to be outdated in two years, you know, or three years. And so there are different, these are all related topics, but they're different. And so I'm just trying to make sure I understand and understanding where we are. So scope creep doesn't creep in that we get past what the intent of our, our task is here and where we're headed. That, that was my, my question.
May I respond? I think we, you can't get to digital equity without actually having a device. Until Google gives us a chip in our fingers that we can hold in the air or stick in a socket, you actually have to have a device. And that, as you know, Jeff being such a, a, a great ally and supporter of what we do with school to home, I, I want to actually commend our, our school partners who do implement school to home. They made the transition to distance learning without missing a beat. Because of course, as you know, everybody had a device to go home. All of the students were trained, all the parents were trained, all of the teachers knew how to do lesson planning. We absolutely have to build the device piece into our education and into Lifeline for everybody else. We also need to recognize that, I want to say, all the hotspots that have been purchased by school districts, we are now getting a flood of calls saying they don't work if the infrastructure isn't adequate. A hotspot will connect you to the infrastructure, but the infrastructure itself has to be adequate. So the very same people that weren't connected before, for a whole variety of reasons, are also finding it difficult even with the hotspot. So I, I want to strongly say broadband infrastructure necessary, but not sufficient. And it will not, it will not solve the problem that the governor is trying to solve if we do not have digital equity as the outcome of this action plan.
Yeah. So thank you all. Just keeping an eye on the clock, I'd love to move to some of the next slides, even though I know we haven't heard from every council member. And what we're going to do is we're going to come back, as I mentioned at the beginning, to vote and talk about and get to an alignment. It seems like the open question on this one is really just about whether or not we include the near-term COVID-related actions. That's the, the thing we should come back to. And then we began talking about some of the scope and the criteria that we're going to jump to in a second. So I'm going to jump into the criteria for a great action plan. We've got two slides here. The thing to note as we, as I walk through this is the stuff highlighted in orange is stuff that was explicitly called out in the executive order. The stuff that's in black is not. It's stuff that we've added as a proposal, again, to provoke some conversation. And so given that this is the first action plan we've had in 10 years, one of the things that we've talked about potentially wanting to include is something that articulates an aspirational and specific target vision with timestamped goals that we're driving towards in the action plan. So something that's far enough out, a couple of years out, that we're saying, hey, here's what we are really, here's the actions that we're going to take. And are we heading on a glide path to achieving what we said we want to, both in terms of the actual outcomes, but also in terms of some of the sort of key milestones around that when it comes to things like infrastructure deployment, equity, devices, those pieces? The second one is making sure that the action plan itself incorporates and articulates tangible actions and responsible parties for the coming year to ensure that we have some timestamps and, you know, who's going to do what by when as part of the roadmap to accelerate the deployment of broadband with our partners and stakeholders. The third piece, as explicitly called out in the EO, was highlighting information about the funding opportunities that are out there, both at a state and the federal level. The, and some of the eligibility considerations there. The fourth is incorporating, Christina, this is to your point, incorporating provisions to maximize the inclusion of tribal lands in the broadband access and adoption opportunities developed in consultation with the tribes. The next piece is around saying, let's make sure that we're providing evidence and data about what works from some of our research, from some of our modeling, from some of the mapping that helps inform the actions. So that, you know, the action plans don't feel like something that's just sort of strung together as a set of independent, discrete actions, but actually comes directly out of what we know about where we are. The next one is informing some of the discussions that are happening at a state and a federal level about how we're going to achieve an ambitious vision here. Following that, creating transparency about where we are today against our vision. So one of the wonderful things about putting out some mile markers in the sand is that we should be able to say with some data gaps, obviously, here's where we are today against where we want to go. And we want to be able to actually track progress against that going forward. And then the last two pieces are, we want to make sure that this isn't purely a state plan, but is really a state of California plan. And so that we're incorporating the private sector and our partner commitments as part of the actions with responsibilities, calling out exactly who is going to do what by when. And then the last thing that I certainly feel passionately about is that it's written in accessible English. So this is something that the public can understand with some compelling visuals that help simplify the problem as well as what we're proposing to go do. And so in some ways, the communications element, like we don't want to go deep into the, the jargon-y world of broadband in the context of this action plan. It really is a contact, it really is a tool to drive people to action. And so this was the, the set of things where we're saying, okay, if, if this broadband action plan is successful, it will incorporate the follow-up, these types of things. And so the question to the council members here is, what do we add or change? And the things that I've heard so far, just to put on the table are, one, we need to, as part of the target vision, we need to explicitly call out both the sort of the actual access things that we're solving for around broadband as well as some of the specific markers around infrastructure, device, literacy, equity, disconnections, and adoption to make sure that this is a more holistic picture of what the problem is we're trying to solve and what are, what are the sort of goals that we're articulating to get there. That's the major thing I've heard from this group so far. And that's going to come up again in the scope conversation. But I'm curious, you know, above and beyond that, are there other things you would propose either taking out, changing, or adding? And I'll look, and Lori, thank you for raising your hand. This is also the first time I've ever actually facilitated via Zoom, so it's, it's new for me too. This is also the first time I've ever actually facilitated via Zoom, so it's, it's new for me too.
We're all learning together, I think. So just on the next slide, when you talk about partnerships with private industry, I think it's important to also call out localities. Local governments have a really important piece that, and, and a lot of it just runs parallel with state, with state processes. There's also a local process that, that goes along with it. And I think we're trying to be holistic, we really need to include them as well.
Noted. Looking for other raised hands, not seeing any. Let me jump back to the first page as well, just to make sure that everyone can see. And for members of the public, we'll have an opportunity for public comment at the end of this as well. Christina, thank you for raising your hand and good to see you.
Good to see you too. So on the second page, the accessibility in accessible English, I think. Some of our geo friends might want to add some other languages to ensure the equity piece. So I know in COVID, we have some pretty rapid translation of like the five key, and I'm just throwing out a number, but there's like. Major languages. And so if we want to have more engagement, we should probably add those two.
I think that is a wonderful point and obviously unintended, so thank you for calling that out Christina. I know that I would certainly get yelled at for that. Anne.
Yes, very quickly on the 100 megabit download. I wonder if we want to talk about upload speed as well. Ultimately, we're going to get into a conversation about what kind of technologies, you know, are able to do what, right? And so I, I think we just need to maybe consider the, the EO specifically called out download. But we're going to, I think we're going to want to talk about what upload speed means and where, and if we want to have a goal for that. I think that's an important conversation to have.
Any other comments or thoughts? So what I've heard so far are three thoughts. One is making sure we're calling out local government here in the private sector and partnership commitments, so really spelling out who the partnerships are going to be, which I think is a great point. Adjusting the languages, because obviously if we want to make this accessible, it actually needs to be accessible in the language that people speak. And then the last question is a, is a, is a tough scoping question, which is around the sort of upload issues. I see two people that are raising their hands. Christina, it looks like you're still raising your hand. Do you have something else to offer? Lowering your hand. Jeff.
Oh, one note about the targeted speeds and obviously aspiring to get the best possible connection everywhere we can is. Just based on experience with education over probably the last seven, eight years. When education set a target and have been doing that, both that was set at the national level, then adopted by the FCC. You know, it's what you want to get to, but unfortunately, the way it was written, it came back and was used as a club to beat up education in schools when they didn't meet those targets. So. I, it's a hand's point, you know, up and down, but also making sure and realizing that there may be some places where. You know, it's not going to be physically possible, you know, for geographic nature that California is. So just being aware of that, because we've lived that on the education side. We want, of course, get the best possible, and we do strive to do that for our schools and for our kids at home. But then when we can't, it's not because we don't want to, it's because we just plain, it's, it will, it may never be available. So just keeping that in mind when we come to setting those aspirational targets and goals.
Perfect. Okay, so keeping an eye on the.
For all of them? Any, anybody we have?
Debbie Peters, would you mind going on mute please?
I think so too.
Debbie Peters.
Oh shit, hold on, they're talking to me.
Yeah, can you please go on mute? Thank you.
Justin, on speeds, it is, it has been a very interesting learning experience through COVID-19 in particular, which has shown us. You know, exposed so many things. And what Anne has talked about in terms of the upload, it's become actually. We're seeing the need for more symmetrical systems. What we have always suggested is that we must have fiber backbone and middle mile backhaul, those end speeds. As Jeff is talking about, I really, we recommend that that needs to be functional. That is whatever is necessary for all the consumers along the pathway of deployment. Both end users that are residential and users that are anchor institutions, they need a different bandwidth and we need to be looking at a dynamic definition. We work closely with schools, as we just said, just to tell you what we get back, and these are three largest school districts in the state of California. Three months ago said they needed 2010, 253 and 3030. It all is all over the map is my point and discovering different speeds that are needed. We've got to be focused on functionality and allow some flexibility, but be very, very clear and absolute about. Adequate speeds to meet all customer needs along the pathway of deployment.
Thank you, Sunny. Martha, I know you raised your hand. Can we do this quickly and then run to the next one, just because I want to make sure we've got time for public comment and we've got a couple more slides to, to run through.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, I'll be really brief. I just, I want to acknowledge what Jeff is saying as a current constraint, but really challenge us to think. In a, in a vision as broad as this action plan with so much collaboration amongst the state agencies and hopefully private sector. That we could actually build out to, we can actually meet these goals. So hopefully the paradigm of folks having to do it alone and having constraints that are really difficult to make it happen. So I really would like us to keep the, the vision for really getting to this goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Sorry to be the, the time cop. So let's talk a little bit about the scope. So I've got two slides here. And again, we'll try to do this quickly and add, and add on what I've heard so far. The first is organization, so like who's doing the work that we're including in the action plan. The proposal here is that this would include, this would be a pretty broad view of what it means to have a California state action plan, which is to say. These could be actions that are committed to by the state, by our local partners, by our federal partner, by the private sector or by nonprofit partners. In terms of the type of actions that we would want to include in the plan itself. This could be around developing and deploying new broadband infrastructure. It could be around improving our knowledge around the current state, which can include data, maps, evidence, include some better modeling. For example, you know, the demand modeling that was called out from the CPUC in the context of the executive order, but also the integrated modeling. That is associated with our supply constraints as well and understanding a little bit of the, you know, what the cost forecast would be to. Make, make sure that we're matching supply and demand at our targets. Driving adoption in our target populations. Obviously Sunny spoke eloquently about this earlier, but making sure that we're, you know, continuing to build an evidence base around what works. Making sure that we're sharing that information and incorporating collaborations with partners to be able to accelerate adoption. Any sort of allocations of additional funding would obviously be important actions. New partnerships or consortia to improve our ability to meet the vision. Improving deployment planning with local government entities. And that, and that we should probably broaden that to tribes as well, which is an oversight. Communicating with and engaging stakeholders. Maximizing the inclusion of tribal lands and then identifying any sort of other opportunities to achieve our action. And again, this is a pretty broad view of what the intended actions that could be included in this action plan are to entail. And so what I'm mostly curious about from this group. Because the things that we've, I've heard called out already are around making sure that we have a focus on devices as well. Literacy and disconnections, which I think we can, we can absolutely incorporate. The question is, are there any other buckets of actions that are missing or are there actions here that we would like to intentionally take out of scope? I'll stay on this page for a couple more seconds and then I'll go back to the other page. See a couple raised hands. All right, first raised hand that I see is Anne.
Okay, super quick on the next page, if you can go back to it. Just on improving deployment planning with local governments, e.g. common standards. When I read the bold, I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm not sure, in some places, common standards make a lot of sense. I also think, but I also think there's a question of learning from. And learning and sort of, uh, learning from and learning across, right? I, I, I don't think it's just a matter of, of common, common standards. Especially when, if we could consider with local governments expanding that to not just deployment, but also adoption, right? There are a lot of local governments in the last eight years, 10 years, who have really moved into adoption and looked at local equity plans. Who are putting things in their tenure plans, Sunny has done a lot of work in that regard. There's a lot of work happening there and I think that that's really important to highlight and try to share and making sure we're getting that information. And making it easier for those communities who want to do that, who haven't done it yet. That's a, a great facilitating role that the, that the state can help with, with an action plan and, and with providing staffing.
Yeah, that may, that makes a lot of sense. So what I'm hearing Anne is very much make sure that we're highlighting and servicing some of the best practices to encourage learning across the state. While at the same time, thinking about the codification of standards as a tool, but not the only tool that we could potentially use.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Martha, you are the next hand, I see.
Okay, thank you. I just more of a process question here in that I think your question was, is there things that are missing or things that should be taken off? And perhaps we could also have some opportunity to follow up on that question. I think, just thinking off the top, there's a few here. But maybe there's a way to, to have that, particularly on the things that may be missing as, as an, as a process step.
Yeah, no, it's a great point as a process step. Let me, let me propose something as a process step and then I'll look at Amy and see and just make sure that we're, I'm tracking here. But as a process step, I'd say at the end of this, let's vote on making sure that we have enough agreement that we can get this process started. And then we can make sure that this is shared across the council. And if there are specific ideas and suggestions that we want to incorporate or add, you can share that back with the broadband council, with the, with Stephanie's team individually. And then we can, we can table any of those additional issues at the, within the context of our next council meeting. Hopefully that keeps us in, in Bagley. Does that work, Amy? Perfect. Does that work, Martha?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other comments here or should we move on to constraints and how we, how we do this? All right, seeing none, let's move to constraints. My favorite topic. So there are a couple of things here. What, the first is that anything that we include in the action plan should have an agreement from the responsible party. So if we say that someone's going to do something, we should have their agreement that they're going to do it before we put it into writing and put it out there into the world. There's an interesting question on the budget that I wanted to make sure we're keying up to this group, which is to say. Do we want to only include things in the action plan that are already fully financed with committed dollars allocated? Or would we want to include things that also, you know, could potentially be financed with some target ideas or shopped, for example, to our friends in the federal government? That's a question I would just want to put a pin in as I go down this list. The, the second major bullet is obviously we need to make sure that this plan is public by December 31st. The third is that we need to adhere to Bagley Keen in developing the plan. And the fourth is that we need to make sure that we're coordinating with the other broadband related working groups that are happening. And so the two most prominent right now are the superintendent's digital divide task force, as well as the governor's business and economic recovery task board, the digital divide subcommittee. And so making sure that we are leveraging the great work that those bodies are doing and making sure that they're incorporated into the context of an overall state view. So I'm curious, opening it up to the broadband council members, I'm curious about a perspective on this funding question, but also to see if there are any other constraints that you, we should be operating within as we develop this plan.
I will just speak, if we were constrained by the dollars we had today, we wouldn't be doing anything. So it, it is important to be able to though have practicality in all of this. And I think being able to project a cost or order of magnitude and options is a reasonable path. But we've actually got to rise to the occasion.
All right, Lori, I've got you next.
Probably more or less reiterating what Sunny just said, that we need goals, right? And we need them to be, we need to have some stretch goals, some aspirational goals, and we need somewhere to work towards. As opposed to just trying to fit into what we have today. And, you know, if, if we, if we put something out there and as long as, you know, it's understood that it's not necessarily possible today. We can plan, we can also then make, I guess, a plan within a plan, right? Of how to actually achieve that goal. But I, I do think it's important to not let existing budget constraints, whether it's our existing allocations or current economic. The current economic situation from constraining us from really trying to get to where we want to be to solve this problem.
Thanks, Lori. Christina.
Yeah, I just wanted to add in that I think if we're looking for philanthropic support, it's going to be easier to get that if we have some. It with fitting within a bigger plan and also I think it helps. Advocacy items for people outside of state governance to go ask for more from the feds and from us.
I, I really like that, thanks Christina. Karen, I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in on that because I think my most recent scarring example is the water resiliency portfolio, which is a very ambitious plan. But it pulls from all aspects of, of government to really lay out what we need to do and with the rationale for doing that and showing the vulnerabilities that we have because of that. So it had money at the first of the year and now it doesn't, but that's not stopping the work to take a very integrated approach. And to do everything we can administratively for now, but it's also something that we can take to DC when there's stimulus or anything else going on. Or any other types of funding mechanisms that present themselves in addition to the partnerships that we need to build. So I, I agree, let's do the planning and knowing that right now we're a resource constrained, but this will show people what they're buying when we take it out to them.
Perfect, I see a lot of nodding heads on this. Okay, great. Let's jump to the next section, which is how are we going to do this? So. There is, the left-hand side begins to articulate some of the work that we need to do and the right-hand side is very much about the how we will do the work. The, the left-hand side is not comprehensive, I should say, but at least indicative of some of the major buckets. One of the first things that we need to do is develop a detailed outline of the action plan. So what is this thing that we're going to be building towards, including some of the proposed analysis and having some placeholders and visuals in the actions. And that at a minimum, this will be really useful for our next broadband council meeting, so that we have an opportunity to be able to, you know, make sure we're all building to the same thing. The second thing is that, you know, in some ways, distinguishing between the, the vision and the goals and the action plan itself, we need to. We need to articulate the vision with some of these mile markers that we care about in terms of, you know, what does it mean to have a deployment goal? What does it mean to have a device goal? What does it mean to have a literacy goal? And we need to actually, we need to spell those out pretty specifically. The third thing is that we've got some work to do on the fact base of the current state. A lot of information exists in different places, but we need to pull it together. One of the key pieces of work here is there's a modeling effort around the demand and supply, which is going to be fun. As well as on the fourth bit, a bit of a timing and a cost model. So to Karen's point, if we want to have something that and Christina's point, if we want to have something we take to the feds and to philanthropy. We need some dollar figures and some some chunks about the work that we're going to do. And so that's going to require some modeling. The fifth is the existing landscape of funding and actions. Sixth is a bit of the lit review and some of the primary user research around adoption. So there's some good stuff there and there's some stuff we can build upon to highlight. And then the last thing is that there's a facilitation element, which is, you know, obviously we're doing this in public. And the CBC is going to continue to be an important forum for doing that. But we also might want to think about some additional forums to be able to gather input from the broader communities that are going to be required to be able to make this a truly California plan. And so those are the the big buckets of work and of course, interested in big things that we are missing from that list. But let me let me go to the right hand side first about proposed responsibilities. So CDT's Office of Broadband is planning to drive the development of this action plan, so actually sort of staffing the work. As well as the implementation of the EO working directly with the relevant organizations and people called out in the executive order. CBC members, we very much, you know, this is of course, a team sport to be able to build this out. And certainly to achieve the level of ambition that we're talking about. And so that's going to require dedicated points of contact from your organizations, but also potentially some additional resources or teams that can help with the, you know, sort of the relevant components of this work. And then in terms of cadence, the drafts will be shared for input and discussion on a monthly basis at these meetings. As Jules alluded to at the alluded to at the very beginning, we're going to make sure that these are at least monthly so that we have an opportunity to come back together as a group. And be able to have an open dialogue about how the integrated whole comes together, even as we continue to do the pieces of work on the individual components on a more bilateral basis. So I'll pause there and very interested in in your perspectives, both around the the work that needs to get done and the how we do the work.
I'll just jump in and say, I wanted to make sure we have a remaining 10 minutes allotted for public comment. So we have about two minutes, wanted to just get final thoughts from the council member, seeing this very detailed plan and approach to develop this. I know some of you may not had a chance to speak, you know, provide your feedback here, so feel free to use this next minute or so. But Justin, great work in facilitating this. So go ahead and council member.
So maybe while you think, let me close out a number of the items because I don't think we were as far out as I thought we were going to be at the beginning of this conversation. It seems like most of the comments, particularly around the criteria and the scope and the constraints, I've saw broad alignment around this group. The one question that I think we have to answer explicitly before we end is do we include short term COVID related actions? And I actually just want to call and vote on that topic because that was not explicitly called out in the executive order. My understanding is that we would need a quorum, sorry, a majority of the quorum to be able to sort of pass the measure. But given the time constraints, can I just ask for a raise of hands for people that would want to include the COVID related topics in the action plan? Sunny, I see.
Actually, Justin, sorry, sorry, Justin, I do need to make have a member to raise a motion and somebody second in the call roll.
Apologies.
You go, I can. I will, I want to respond and and honor what your request is. I move that the action plan respond to the immediate needs of COVID-19. With the sense of urgency that the state must bring to the to the solutions.
Actually, before I call for a vote, I before I call for a vote, sorry to interrupt, I did guess I'm watching the whole chat room going on and public comment. We might want to have an opportunity to the public to chime in on their thoughts on this before we come back for a vote on that specific item, if that's okay with everyone.
That's great.
All right.
Can we do a panel discussion on that? Because I'm wondering what the timing on looks like if we're rolling this out like December 31. Like is COVID as like, I think that's something that we should be prioritizing in general, but in terms of this action plan, is that going to be as salient?
Yeah, if any of the member wants to go ahead and chime in with that point, go ahead. I just want to make sure we have about at least minimum time available for the public to chime in as well. Or if the public wants to go ahead and put your thoughts in the chat room, we can do this simultaneously too.
That's actually, that was my concern with including kind of these short term immediate things. Seems like things that we should be doing anyway. And for this plan, this action plan that's looking into the future and that won't be released until December. It feels like we should learn the lessons from COVID and apply those to this plan, but not necessarily have actions specifically for this kind of current pandemic. Oh, go ahead, Sunny.
I I will wait to just comment afterwards, after everyone's commented.
I'd suggest that we start by including the COVID discussions in our framing of the agendas. Because many of the things that we're doing in COVID are things that we've wanted to do for a long time and have been accelerated by the sudden urgency. And so I think it gives us an opportunity to to think about how do we translate the short term actions we made into long term commitments, right? And thinking to the beginning of the conversation about Martha, Commissioner Guzmanisave is talking about the the discussion on the hotspots and the use of of the state, you know, state funds for that, right? And so how do we, we're going to have to bridge that. And so while there, while it may not be a COVID related action plan, I think we're going to, it, I think it has to be part of our discussion because all these things have come out. And we now have to figure out how to translate them to keep them going so that we don't lose them and and kind of start a 50 paces back.
Martha? So you have a race.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, honestly, I've I have interpreted our orders under the EO as pertaining to COVID and not separate from them. I think my question really, or the question raised earlier was, is there a phasing of the action plan, if you will? And I think every, I agree with folks' comments that these are things we're working on now for sure. But just in the context, for example, of what we can ISP's to really commit and do more for now. We we cannot as a, we need to do this and as a coalition and broader ideas. And I wish that we will have everything resolved by December related to COVID, but I don't know that that's going to be the case. So I think there are some. I'm not sure these are all kind of mutually exclusive thoughts. I think there there may be a way to frame them as maybe the first set of actions around continued work on these different action items. Okay.
All right.
Just very quickly, I would agree with that. And we are being counseled almost daily from the governor's office of what we're doing for COVID now, trying to think about that as a bridge to someday after COVID. And really taking lessons learned and the investments that will have longer term benefits. And this, as someone has already said, we've been forced to do a lot of things very rapidly. And some of that's going to be long lasting and we can build on it and we can learn from what isn't working to be able to make this plan better. So I think in the framing document, we have to acknowledge COVID, what it has brought to us and what we are using from COVID solutions for the bridge into intermediate and longer term solutions.
Got it. Thank you. Again, in the interest of keeping time, we can wrap this. I'd like to actually move, if it's okay with the council, that we can come back with a revised motion if we need to before we end this meeting to take a vote on it in term of the COVID scope. But I understand there have been two, at least two public comments via letter that has been sent forward to this council. We just received them. Wanted to make sure. And I'll actually, Justin, if you want to go ahead and close the share screen, we can get that back and we can always flip this back on before the final vote. To go ahead and have Jewel, our staff, to summarize in a very brief laid you on those incoming letters to the council member. And then I also wanted to make sure that folks that are participating right now have a chance to chime in in the in the fashion and continue to remind the public, you could use the chat room to also provide your feedback in the meantime. So Jewel, with that.
Yes, so we just received one public comment and I'm, I apologize if I don't pronounce his name correctly. From Gary Mitchellson of Mitchellson 2MM Foundation. He would like the state to issue a request for proposal to provide high speed internet to every person in California. We also just received during this meeting from Crown Castle. And if Crown Castle is there, if they want to go ahead and state it instead of me, they may want to do that. And we will attach their comments that they submitted to the minutes when we post them. So I don't know if Ms. Swanson is on the meeting or not.
Before we go there, Joe, I think there was also a letter from, what's it, from Riverside?
It was the Riverside County Office of Education and Mr. Vaca is on the line. So I think he may want to address it and we can attach his full comments to the minutes as well.
Got it.
Unless Jeff, if you prefer that I do it, I'm happy to do a summary.
I'm happy with you doing the summary, Jewel. Thank you.
Okay. On behalf of the Kent of Riverside County Office of Education has the following recommendations. That there be a minimum upload speed of 100 megabits per second to match the executive orders recommended download speed. In addition to the Public Utilities Commission and the California State Transportation Agency, that the broadband council consider a role for county offices of education when determining needs and setting priorities for families with children in school. And that the number of families with students in schools are included in the criteria when considering needs and priorities. That wireless infrastructure solutions are considered when Department of General Services and Department of Technology seek to leverage state contract authorities. And when work begins and moves forward, there are considerations of the amount of wireless network space available for localities. So they are able to create their own wireless networks and making existing wireless frequencies available for use and lease by educational entities. Jeff, is that okay?
That's great, thank you.
That's it, Amy.
All right, thank you. And then I believe we have Rochelle from Crown Castle wanted to go ahead and speak on the item that you've submitted. Go ahead.
Thank you. I really wanted to start with just thanking all of you for the hard work. And this is even pre executive order. It's been very heartening to see this dedication to be able to really make a big difference in broadband. And as the country sort of shared infrastructure company, really wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that we continue to be active and engaged and be supportive. And, you know, working together on this issue. And really wanted to highlight, for many of you are aware, is, you know, we also have a lot of local jurisdictions who've worked really hard to adopt best practices and moving things forward. But we also have others that have a very laborious process that takes a lot longer. And but coupled with that, as we know with COVID too, there's furloughs. And so I just, you know, wanted to make sure that as we're going through and finding solutions, we're being mindful that of some of this funding may need to even go to local governments to help them, help all of us, public and private. Be able to really deploy the most efficient way and make sure that all the dollars that we're investing can go as, you know, reach as many people as possible to really help make a significant difference in a reasonable amount of time. And so again, thank you for allowing for the public comment, both submitted by email and and on video. And really look forward to participating, you know, as you all see fit to be able to share anything that we can. So thank you again.
Thank you, Rochelle, for that. And there are quite a bit of a public comment over the chat room. Thank you for those of you that provided feedback. And I just wanted to have given a last chance. And if anybody like to speak on to that, we can go ahead and provide opportunity. Yes, I see a hand raised. Go ahead. There's a Ms. Johnson.
Good morning, members of the California Broadband Council. My name is Anna Maria Johnson and I'm a program manager in the Public Advocates Office. The Public Advocates Office is an independent organization at the California Public Utilities Commission. And we advocate on behalf of Californians for affordable, safe and reliable utility service, and that includes broadband service. As you all know and have discussed in this meeting, a broadband connection is definitely essential. It's an essential service and it is the foundation and the bedrock on which Californians are communicating, attending school through distance learning, teleworking. Attending doctor visits through telehealth and obtaining important critical information on what is happening in their communities, especially during wildfires and emergency situations. The Public Advocates Office is here to support your efforts and I would like to ask the council how we can help you complete the broadband action plan. Please let me know how we can add value, how we can participate in any working groups or committees, how we can collaborate and ultimately achieve the goals of connecting California. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think I saw another hand from, is it Eli?
Yes, I'd like to suggest that you incorporate groups like the CAPE, California Bilingual Educators, the California Latino School Board Association. Because you're talking about the most disadvantaged community in the state of California. It's the Hispanic community and also the African American community. And if you don't engage them, then you really don't have a feel for what's in the ground. Sunny's brought up some great points and top priorities that this should include COVID-19 planning. There are funds that are coming down and some states are actually using a lot of their funds towards closing the digital divide. So there's some best practices out there, but I think if you don't engage with the leadership that are at these schools and reverse engineer to your solution, then you're going to miss a big gap of what you're trying to solve. So please include them. Dr. Barbara Flores is the current president of CAPE and there's others that are willing to work with your group and they're trying to work on a national level. But in within California, we need some best practices. The large school districts like LA Unified are meeting with the county in emergency meetings as we speak. And the reason why they're doing that is is they don't have their problems solved yet. And that's a large school district who's got huge technology teams that deal with the matter. But your average middle school district and your small school districts are disadvantaged because they don't have the tech support to deal with this broadband planning. So I'd suggest COVID-19 is is part of your program immediately, short term. And I also suggest that you're considering you're building kind of a diamond lane with a broadband solution, but you need to walk before you run. And if you don't get local community municipalities involved with mesh networks and other networks to walk before they run, some access is better than no access. So it's nice to have hundred megawatts down and whatever number you want up. But the bottom line is if you don't have access today, those kids, you're going to lose a whole decade of education if we don't get those kids connected now. So please, those items.
Thank you. Just for the record, Eli, if you could go ahead and have your full name and your affiliation so we can have that on the record, please.
Elias S. Cortez, retired California State CIO and Cabinet Secretary.
All right, thank you for that. All right. I believe I don't see any other hands unless I'm missing somebody here. If it is, let me know.
Looks like Philip Ken was raising his hand.
Is there one more hand?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Justin. I just wanted to clarify the comments submitted by Dr. Gary Michaelson and the Michaelson 2MM Foundation. We've been working for about a decade to advance educational access equity and affordability. So just to clarify what the proposal was, we were hoping that there was some consideration by the council to advance an RFP that would create sort of a reverse auction from ISP providers that would provide. that would provide broader access to more folks in California, if not all folks in California. And that could be a loss leader for those companies, but it would give them a greater foothold and then be able to offer this service as sort of a minimum option for folks who would still be free to then consider any other plans that they might want to engage in. But this would provide a minimum level of access for for more people in California, both rural and in the lower income areas, urban areas.
Great. Thank you for that, Philip. All right. I believe that's all of the public comment. Just note that all of the information you provided over chat, we will go ahead and capture those and it will be part of the meeting minutes. So thank you so much for it. In the interest of closing, Sal, I want to go ahead and ask back to the council member. Based on these discussion and hearing from the public comment, does any motion want to be modified? Or go forward with the earlier motion on whether or not to have the COVID-19 component included? Sounds like Sunday, you're.
I wanted to defer to a member of this state agency to frame well. Everybody said it. We need a sense of urgency. We have to learn from COVID-19. We have to, I think, stage our actions. As Martha has said, Lori and I discussed yesterday, we've got to be able to approve and permit at the speed of construction. And if it's not COVID-19, it will be another future pandemic or emergency that we have to respond to, which includes obviously being able to streamline permitting, Rochelle. So I would just, why don't we ask Secretary Ross if she wants to frame it or 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 Secretary or Commissioner Guzmanasabe who said the really the balance of what we're trying to do.
Okay, I see that Secretary Ross had to leave, so I can take a shot to make a motion to incorporate a COVID, which I think, you know, obviously, the action plan is already already incorporates COVID response, but just to have a phased priority within the action plan for some of the more rapid response things that we could potentially do and continue through the the following year.
I'll second that.
All right, let's go for our vote. I'll just say, let's do it a simple way. If you can do a physical hand raise, since we have everybody on the screen and those in favor. I just want to make sure I use a thumbs up. Okay. All right. Looks like a post. I've seen. All right, we have, we have approval on this item. Thank you so much. And Sunny figured out the raised hand. Yay, Sunny, good for you. All right. So once again, thank you so much. I thank you, Justin, for the excellent facilitation and helping all of us to get this action plan going. In the interest of time, we always run out of time and in 90 minutes, we will be very judicial on how long we're going to set up in the upcoming monthly reviews. But thank you all. And it's a lot of work and exciting work coming along. But make sure you take care of yourself in between and we look forward to seeing you and engage with you and all of our public participants in this meeting in in working towards a action plan to be released end of the year. Thank you so much. Take care.